All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to our first official council meeting for 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:04 in the evening. We will have one small addition to the agenda right on the front side after we recognize the visitors with the pledge of allegiance, if you guys wouldn't mind joining us. So roll call. David?
I'm present.
Steven? Chris?
Here.
Kevin? Cool. And to recognize visitors. If anybody wants to pop up with their name, we can document that for you.
My name is Kelly Foreman.
Kelly Foreman. Okay. Thank you.
I'm Ken Paul. During.
All right. Thank you. We're going to reintroduce during the pledge of allegiance at council meeting, so if we wouldn't mind standing and. Had to steal it from the back from the library.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. As you guys can well imagine, we got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so without any further ado, I'd like to bring up the approval, review and approval of the minutes from December 13th, council meeting. I am ready to entertain a motion when you guys are ready. Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion first and seconded to approve the minutes from the 13th. Any comments? Any questions?
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. We all good?
Earlier I saw a typo. It was at the start of it, but I can't find it now. I'm not even sure if that was this section or not. Other than that, I'm good.
Does anybody want to? Or I guess we're just calling a question. All in favor of approving the minutes for December 13th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained. Okay, so we have a vote of three zero one. Okay, I would like to review and approve the minutes from our meeting on December 29th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, our motion's first and seconded. Do we have any questions, comments?
I am good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Chris? You good?
Good.
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I do take that back one little thing. On the. Where it says the 2024 budget was be sent to the state auditors. Is the B supposed to be in there? BE?
Which page?
You got that? See, I'm trying to figure out. It's on page three, I believe. Okay, no worries. I'm not.
Oh, there it is. Got it.
Okay, that's where it was. So other than that, I'm good to go, so.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of passing the December 29th minutes with the one correction of the verbiage, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have some payroll to approve. Oh, no, I beg your pardon. Observe the check register from December 13th. We didn't cover any of the base lines on the 29th. We're just trying to get through that meeting as quick as possible, so.
This is observe check register.
So it's this. It was just, it's already been approved.
The color wants to know.
No, no, no.
No?
This one is to, this is a list of claims, check register.
Okay, where are they?
I don't know if it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. It's this one. Which we did approve of.
From the 13th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Okay, any comments or questions on that? Okay. Moving on to the December 2023 payroll. Do we have a second on the payroll? All right, thank you. Discussion?
PFML Employment Security Department adjustment for prior years. I just wanted to check. Is everyone who would like, does anyone upset with us with any of that? Are we all, we're all good to go going forward?
I can answer if you can.
Oh, just.
Is that a final figure? Is there going to be another addition to that next month? Okay. What does PFML stand for? Okay, I should know. I just want to clarify that.
But there's no like penalties or anything?
Any other discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, all in favor of approving the December 23 payroll, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no nays. Okay, thank you. Approve the new claims. But imagine there's going to be a question or three of those.
Put into discussion.
Okay. Do we have a second to approve the claims?
Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. And discussion? Questions?
Left Lotus from Warwick is 640 instead of 500.
Yeah, we did reach out to them and got that clarified. It basically ties into what they've been working on with some of the records in the past, with some of the record, some of the bookkeeping wasn't as clean as it could have been from the past, and so they spent some extra time getting those caught up.
Question?
Yep.
Grange, is that the fuel?
Yes.
Okay.
The rather large number, just, I mean, you can't ignore the $51,000. There's a lot of one-time, once-a-year costs buried in there. Including our insurance, and I'll be happy to say that our insurance from the initial report that they gave us, they came down significantly. There was some pushback amongst different mayors throughout the state, and they backed off on the rate increase.
Is that the AWC Risk Management Service Agency?
Correct.
You're referring to?
And without looking at the budget, I have a, I seem to have a recollection that's about the same rate we paid last year. Very close. I knew, I know it's a lot less than we were anticipating it going up this year.
I guess the only other question I have is Anatech. The, well, the different figures, why they're different. Being charged different amounts. Was it more testing, less testing, or are they just?
Definitely more testing. I saw that myself this afternoon. I actually looked at the invoice. I did not have time to get a better understanding, but there was definitely more tests being run.
So it seemed, well, you go from 1180 to 265 and two of them at 487.
Which is more often than not the standard.
Yeah.
That you see. Not that it fixes this, but I had already looked at it and decided that was going to, kind of with some of the other issues that we've had with some of the invoices not quite making sense. I'm going to reach out to them and ask them for some better clarity. I mean, what they're charging us for is very clear. I think they're getting behind some way in their billing, so we get bills one day after another for different tests, and it's almost as if the tests were done right, but they didn't get around to billing them. So it looks like all of a sudden, for the entire month, within four days, we had all the testing done in four days.
So it's just a billing issue on their part?
I'm hoping that is simply the issue.
A red flag or, you know, okay.
You know, they're a reputable organization. There's, there's no reason to expect or to think that they're holding on to samples until they get around to testing Harrington's all at once. With that being said, I just, I'm going to ask them for a little more clarity.
Sounds like you got a handle on it, so it's.
Well, at least I spotted the same thing that you guys did, so.
Okay, I don't have any, any more questions.
Chris?
What about the Secretary of the State Library? What do you recall what those charges are for?
The, yes, the program that the library is using for cataloging and the library management system is there. That's, that also is the cost that they are paying to be part of the regional book sharing program. So again, that's one of those once-a-year charges.
Okay, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
It's once a year, you said?
Yeah, that's a once-a-year charge.
Okay, is that an answer to that?
I'm good then.
Okay.
I would maybe suggest that we could potentially break out all the library charges and list them separately, because in theory, the way we look to budget is that any library charge gets billed to the libraries and while we do have a responsibility for those funds because the library is us, at least until they use up their budget, we don't theoretically care a lot. So in terms of knowing at a glance what we can pass through, it might be easier to have, because there's, I think, isn't there a couple non-contiguous line items? Maybe it's, maybe it's just all those directly. I thought there was one that was additional. Oh, the Link County Record Times, that's for the library, so that's also a library charge.
That is actually our, no, that's our advertising.
Oh, 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 that's not our, that's not our, okay, because I know that we also have.
It's not our subscription, no.
Never mind. Well, I mean, the point, I think, still somewhat stands that we could probably break out, but now that they're all contiguous, that is, sorry for that.
Did I take it, the Fowler Distillery, Ball Valve, Curb Stop, is that for the building?
Yes, yeah, and I will be getting together with the former mayor to get a better clarification on how much of that was being passed through to the ultimate recipient of that, because I understand they're reimbursing the city for some of this stuff.
Well, I was just kind of referring to the name. I kind of put two and two together.
H D Fowler.
But I mean, what it was for, distillery, I still think of that little Grange building or Solos building.
It's, it's, it's getting, it's getting the water and other utilities to the distillery across the street, so.
Because it was chopped off.
Yes, yeah, they had to put in a brand-new, a brand-new connection. And it wasn't a cheap connection either, because they had to go with the bigger line, because they have greater requirements for water and sprinkler systems and what have you, so it was a thing. Anything else?
No, I promise, that's all I have.
Okay. Can we have a vote on approving the claims then? I signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. For putting up with the rookie.
I'm doing fine.
Okay, the other one was the revenue report. That's something new. We talked about it during our workshop, and I just wanted to see if anyone just had a chance to look at it. Really nothing to vote on, but it just gives you an idea of some of the revenues that are coming in from the different tax sources through the state that comes to the city, so. from the different tax sources through the state that comes to the city, so.
It's good that we're getting that fifty three cents of DUI.
Yep.
So this is just our portion of the county's tax or state, I mean?
State. So that's sales tax. Actually, I think it's state and county.
It looks like this is...
That's what I get when I log into the state.
Last year's.
Yeah, I just gave you, just because we didn't have any, really anything to report for January twenty twenty four, so I thought, looking at what twenty twenty three.
One thing I don't understand, I mean, you, maybe explain it to me. When it says criminal justice, they have a dollar amount. What, that's how much we get to go towards?
My understanding is when there are fines assessed throughout the county and maybe even throughout the state, that that is distributed, not necessarily in the jurisdiction that the offense occurred. But it's, it's kind of like the marijuana tax. We don't have a marijuana place, but we get, we get taxed that's evenly distributed.
And the motor vehicle, fuel tax. Got it.
It is interesting to see this. I had never seen a printout like this to see where all it's coming from.
What do they call them? Public safety tax? I see that in there. You go down two.
I do not know, but I can find out for you.
Because it says public safety tax and then local criminal tax, criminal justice tax. And what is that called in the category? It's a source and category, so I just wonder how they come up with that, but...
I know a little bit about the public safety tax. So about ten years ago, it's a three percent, a one percent. And the county actually voted on that, and that allows for extra services through prosecutor's office, through court services, and also funded a deputy with a different kind of insurance package. And prior to the county requesting that tax, they actually went and ran out of all of the seven different towns as well to get support. They, they did it two years prior to their, it didn't pass, and then actually the vote of all the towns did pass. But it took about ten years to break up. It's been like that so actually it's been passed, but it didn't extend.
Okay, thank you.
And when you say court services, can you elaborate a little bit on that as to what that affords the city?
Well, if there is, so prosecutor's office, you know, public defense and things like that. So it is basically all encompassing for the county and the cities and social contracts and social security contracts with the, you know, court services, it's all part of that. So individual defense and all, get into the prosecutor and, you know, the district court.
Yeah. I, I just asked, because there's been some open questions historically as to what services Harrington has rights to based upon what we pay for things in regard to our ordinance enforcement. We've gotten various responses from talking to various people in the county. So I think that's something we're probably going to be, according to what our mayor had talked about for our priorities this year, something we'll probably revisit in terms of what we can do to better enforce our ordinances.
And currently not a function of the longer term.
The...
It's the way I would have...
That's what we would love to get clarified.
So we put you to work already for it?
I guess so.
All right.
Thank you for sharing that. That was welcome.
We good to move on? Okay, and this may be a horrible way to put it, but for the, for the main event, I'd like to open the floor for interviews with our candidates for the open council position, number one. There is, did everyone get a chance to read the ordinance or the resolution that we put in place?
I think it might be a good idea to read it.
And I might need to bring that up and read it again.
Henry on that?
Okay, without reading all four pages, two pages. So. Presentations. The applicants have the option of, I'm summarizing. Have the option at this time to speak to the council for up to ten minutes. And then afterwards, the members of the council will have time, unlimited time, to ask specific questions from you guys. The order of presentations will be determined by, as the letter of intent was received in City Hall.
It says random drawn by the clerk.
That's, that's for when they present, but the, the vote is in the...
Oh, you're right.
You're right.
Yeah, presentations are random, but the vote is in the order of the presentation.
Well, that is too. The order of that presentation will be determined by random drawing by the clerk.
Right, right. No, no, I was referring to on the next, the next page. The nominees are voted on in the order...
Nominations were made.
The nominations in the order of...
We, we do all this, then we go to the executive session.
Yeah.
And then we come out, the mayor asks us for nominations, and whatever that order is, then that is the...
Well, we actually don't ask for nominations.
The vote, that's what the vote, the order of the voting, the call out.
Correct.
According to this, I'm not making this up.
Yeah, no. Yeah, there's, we took the nomination on somebody to that position out of the equation. Everyone's by virtue of applying is nominated, yes, so.
So David, I think your printout might be an older version. So in the email that Joe sent out, this, it, it's mostly the same, but this is where it says that the mayor will announce the list of applicants as nominees in the order that the applicants... It's mostly the same, but I think it was that last little wordsmith thing we did before we adopted it, that there's minor variations. The final version has the, the signing thing for Jeff's at the, at the bottom of it.
So just to cut to the chase, does, do any of you have a formal presentation verbally that you would want to say? Okay, cool, so we don't have to worry about pulling random names out of a hat.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a recommendation.
Sure.
That if they're comfortable with it, that we just, the council members, by council seat number, we go through and ask them a series of questions, if they feel comfortable doing that, an answer to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, because we're, we're basically, we're at that point where we have now have an unlimited, unlimited time, amount of time to ask questions, the council does. So, and if you want to do that, we didn't clarify that, but if you want to do that by seat, that's fine.
And, just so you know, I have two questions, and they're going to be two, all of them.
You have the floor.
Okay. So to whoever, to whomever, just two questions, it's not so hard. And I can give them one at a ti, obviously one at a time, so you don't have to remember the second part. But number one, what do you believe are some of the most important issues for the city of Harrington in twenty twenty four and beyond? That's the first question. Number two, what assets, meaning experience and background, do you have that this will benefit, that will benefit the city, the council, and the mayor? What experience do you have bring, to bring to the table that will benefit?
To clarify, part one is what do we see as important in the coming year?
What do you believe are some of the most, most important issues?
And the second part is...
And I can read them again.
No, I was just trying to clarify my brain, so.
So.
If I'll be the first, I'll go first.
You have the floor.
I just, the most important issues I see are infrastructure and to a certain extent, safety, because those are, I thought I was loud enough for the whole world to hear. Just in general, I think that government's whole job is infrastructure and safety. Other than that, it's, I feel that most people can take care of most of their needs themselves. But for, like, the infrastructure, the water systems, the meters, weeds, streets, plowing, that kind of thing, is what I think, it just is an ongoing thing, should be the city's main focuses. In regards to what I think I can bring to the table, I have worked for the last nineteen years in a company that deals very extensively with government bureaucracy. I know how to navigate that. I know how to work with governments and agencies to help get things done. I believe that the world should be fiscally responsible and not spend money they don't have. I don't know, who wants to go next?
Oh, by the way, I'm Kelly Forman. Janice Meats, and looking into the future, twenty twenty four and beyond, I would, my first thing was, you know, continue to hire a public works employee that, and maybe offer a sign-on bonus and make sure the benefits and the package is going to keep the people here with the city. The other one was going to electric meters for the water system, because our water is a huge revenue maker for the city, and without reading meters, we don't have that revenue coming in. And enforceable ordinances. We have lots of ordinances, but with the wording that is in them, I don't think that they're enforceable. So I think that there's, there are some, but I think a lot of them need to be revisited just from the experience that I had as working in, as the clerk for almost three years. They think they need to be revisited and with the attorney or, you know, and revamped. It's going to be time consuming, but worth it in the end. What I bring to the table, well, I grew up in Lincoln County, so I'm familiar with rural and our little, little towns and cities. I have experience as a city clerk here for Harrington. I'm currently the executive director for the Economic Development Council, and hopefully they hire my replacement very soon. And a current business owner, owner here in Harrington also. So I feel like I, I have a lot of grant writing experience, which I know that that city can use, and I know that I wrote a grant for the city of Harrington as the EDC director, and it was awarded. So I think that there's a lot of aspects for infrastructure that I can, I can help navigate with the relationships that I've built at, at the state level, so.
How do I compete?
Carefully.
So I'm Chris Meats. I've been in Harrington for about ten years. My current job, which I've been doing for twenty years, is a infrastructure architect for a company called Clearwater Paper Corporation. My primary role is sustainability of the business and risk management. That's the way I look at things, and the challenges that I see is the risk of not having the public works employees that we need to deal with the infrastructure issues, and then the infrastructure issues themselves with the city's water system, sewer system. So I think that area of this community needs a lot of focus.
Right. Anybody else question?
Me? Well, David had one of mine that I was going to go with. That's a good one. So the next one I had would be, are there any decisions from the council in the last two years that you're aware of that you would have liked to have seen done differently?
I have a real short answer on that one. No.
She probably has more into it.
No, I was honestly very extremely busy with my executive director position. And no, I, there was nothing, I think the council's done, you know, a good job, and they, you deal with issues as they come up. I mean, that's how it goes. And if people aren't going to put their butts in the seat, then they don't have any reason to be talking or, you know, or being upset about a, about a decision if they're not here to voice their opinion, so.
I'm in agreement with her.
You're married to me.
And then my, my last question, and I, I think some of you may have already touched on it from what you had said earlier, but I'll give you an opportunity specifically to expand on it. Is that, you know, David, that question I think is more oriented, what David asks is more oriented, what's the contextual challenges that we have as a city? But for you personally, kind of like last week in the workshop, Joe went around the table and asked the various councilmen, council members. Persons. What their priorities were for the next year. So regardless of the specific challenges and the overarching challenges of our town, what do you think are more personal passions for, for each of you as you see things changing in the city?
Well, one of my big ones, you guys have already addressed, which was the internet. I'm very excited about that one coming in. I would love to have the meters replaced, because even if you had somebody to read the meters, they can't read mine because it's buried. So I, I feel like there are things that just need to be prioritized, and you just need to get to them and then move to the next one, and it just feels like a lot of times there's just people getting in their own way and roadblocks to getting things done. And like, other than that, I mean, would like the weed sprayed, would like the streets plowed, I would. I know I'm going to say weed sprayed every time because the weeds need to be sprayed. I, yeah, I feel like, I feel like the town needs to be welcoming to businesses and residents and people of all stripes. I would love, I don't want it to see it to grow. I don't want it to be Seattle. I don't want it to be Spokane, but I don't want it to shrivel up and die. So it needs to at least, the growth, the infrastructure, and what needs to happen to at least maintain itself as an entity, as a town, and not just be a little ghost town in the country.
Want to repeat your question again?
Yeah, aside from the challenges of our city that David asked about, and, and again, I know you kind of already mentioned one of the things for you, but what are the more passionate projects? If you were on council, what are the things that you would want to drive? What are, what are the things that you really have a, a focus on?
My first thing I'm going to have to say is transparency. So with the whole council, no, everybody needs to continue to be transparent with what goes on, the issues, the problems. I feel that our groups here in Harrington could work stronger together. I kind of had a discussion about that. I think the, you know, the public, they all do great and wonderful things, but if everybody was just a little more cohesive, then hopefully maybe we can get to that point. was just a little more cohesive, then hopefully maybe we can get to that point where the chamber and PDA and, you know, the historical preservation and that everybody just works together because we can do a whole lot more being united than we can just that, they're doing their stuff, they're doing their stuff, no, you're not going to get into my business type thing. If we can try to gently break down those walls, I think Harrington's going to continue to thrive and, and do great.
One more time with the question?
What would you want to drive if you're on council for this next year?
What would I want to drive?
Yeah. What, what would you want to really push through and see get done?
Well, I'd love to see the water plan actually completed.
Yeah.
I'd love to see access to that public funds to upgrade our infrastructure. I'd also love to see some of the renewable energy money brought into this town to help mitigate some of its costs overall. There's millions of dollars out there for solar. So anything we can do to make it so we don't have to spend the money that we're getting is a good way to go. Thank you.
That's it for my questions. I just would stop by saying I think we, all of our candidates have some very significant traits. And it's, since we have the set list of people finalized since Friday, it is not as far as thinking about what to do here. A compliment to all three of you.
You know, I, I was here a year ago.
Yes.
Chilling my nails. They all have, you guys all have good things that you would like to see get done and things that, that we have problems with. Some of these we've dealt with over the last year, and I can see where you have special skills to help us get together and see if we can get some of the stuff done that needs to be done. I don't have any special questions.
I guess for me, being, this is my first on-the-books meeting as a council member, it's, I can't say that I can really give any questions to ask, being as, you know, I'm, I'm still trying to, I'm just kind of sitting back and learning the ropes here, so I really don't have any questions.
I couldn't find the flag. You're doing great.
Well, I'm kind of sitting.
I do have a question for all of them. I mean, this is the council's decision, but I would love to know. If you were on this side and you were interviewing for your role, what are some of the traits you look for in a council member in Harrington?
I think the traits that I look for in any sort of interview situation, I like consistency, I like stick-to-it-iveness, my mom would have called it stubbornness, but I, I want somebody who's focused and driven. I like people who get things done.
So yeah, it would have to be, you know, you have to have a servant's nature to be able to do these types of roles. So I feel that we're in a position now, either one of us, even with the business, that we're just hired on a new guy, Connor, tonight, so I think that he'll, he'll work out real well, and I'll be more readily available and off two, three times a week, so. I, that was a good question, honestly. There needs to be coercitiv, co, coerci, coercive? Yeah. Coerciveness between the council, which I feel that there is. And council needs to look at whose personality is going to fit in with theirs to make that stay that way. I think it's really important. So it's really, it's a, going to be a hard council decision, but that it's a decision you guys have to look at and go, okay, can, can I work with this person? Can I work one-on-one with this person? You know, can we do group stuff together? Or is it going to be, you know, an out-of-control seating arrangement that's, nothing is ever going to get done? So that's...
I guess for me, it would be commitment of focus and time. Which one of the candidates has the ability to commit the time and the focus needed to complete the work that needs to be done? That's what the role is, so.
All that crap.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to possibly mention the term of this, is there a two-year left?
Yeah, so I did get clarified with the, the auditor's office, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. This will run for two years. They only run city and town elections on odd years. So I was mistaken. I thought it was the next cycle, that it could possibly come up at wood, and it does not. So the seat would go for two years before it would be up for election.
By the end of 25.
Twenty-five, yes.
But don't you have, so I had to run the next year even though I wasn't on, and then I ran again. Commissioner Gilchrist has had to do back-to-backs. They don't do...
That was odd.
I, I just, I outlined it to Norm, and that is the answer he gave me, so...
They run it. I've had it both ways, and yes, a person in this situation would be filling that unexpired term. So if anybody has any information, like Mr. Hardy brought up, brought up about having to run again, I don't, I don't get that part. And Norm over there, I don't know. If something's changed in the last year or two, I...
I mean, I, like I said, I, anticipating that answer or that question, I kind of, early on in this, I asked that, so.
I know there's a guest in the audience, Commissioner, and do you have any insight to that?
I do not, no, but I'm surprised with that answer, to be honest with you, but if it came from the auditor's office, I would vote that. But I honestly don't have any insight anywhere really other than that.
Yeah. I, I was honestly under the, because I'd had that conversation, a conversation with him, and he made it clear that, no, the county kind of wanted to have this, the citizens, whenever possible, elect that position.
So mainly, you think it was just getting back on odd year?
It may have been, yeah.
Or even year, or whatever it was, the cycle?
Yeah.
Okay, so to make it look official?
Yeah, well, and I know there was a lot of, I mean, you two got appointed at the same time, but you're not on the same election cycle.
Right.
So, so that it might have just been timing that that happened. Okay. Biggie, pardon?
I just allowed that to answer.
Okay. If we have no other questions, do we want to take an executive session to have discussion?
I think so.
Okay.
Question is, where? That vault's not big enough.
We can, we can go in the hallway, or we can go in the mayor's office. We just have to drag, we're, we're standing or dragging chairs, whichever way you want.
It's not like there's six of us right now.
Right. Right.
And we could play elevator music for the guests.
Yes. So how long do you think we need?
Hmm.
It's currently...
Go at least, go at least 15. We need to, be my recommendation.
You want to just round it out to, oh, so to speak, to 8:05?
We'll give you the answer tomorrow. Just kidding, everyone.
So, want to go 12 minutes to 8:05?
I, I, the way I have this, I think, uh...
Yeah, what's the technology tell us we can do?
Incredibly far, 15 minutes.
Okay. Okay. 15.
I'm going to go in there.
All right. Okay, well, welcome back. Thank you for your patience. We have determined that we can continue along the appointment process. If you guys want, I can read this, this part of it. But to summarize, the council has one vote each. I will call out the names in the order that the intent is received. And that's the way it works. So.
Raise a hand and voice.
Yeah, hand and voice, yeah.
Voice and hand.
So with that in mind, Kelly was the first one with her letter of intent. So can I see a show of hands and verbal affirmation for those who would be voting for Kelly?
Aye.
Second was Chris. Your paper was on top of Janice's when it got here. So those selecting Chris for the council position. And last but not least, Janice.
Aye.
Okay. We have a tie, two-two. Which brings up a whole nother set of guidelines. When it is a tie. Okay, in this case, the tie, we would assess back in the executive session to discuss qualifications again.
That is an option.
That is an option. Option maybe to make a motion to revote on the nominations. Someone to make a motion to reopen the nominations and add an additional slate. Should be noted that once nominated, no candidate is removed from consideration unless they withdraw. Make a motion to postpone the vote on nominations. Solicit additional information from the applicants, nominees. Make any other motion allowable under Robert's rules of orders. And if anybody wants that, I've got the book in the bag.
Can you do more than one of those?
It doesn't, it, it just says may. It doesn't say one or the other. I think it could be all of them.
Because I, I would make a motion, I'd like to solicit some more information and go back to executive session.
So more questions then.
Right.
Okay. You guys are good with that? Okay. All right. So with that in mind, council has more questions of our candidates. Please go ahead.
I have one question for Ms. Foreman.
Okay.
And it'll also be to Janice as well. You mentioned, what is your experience in writing grants?
I do not have any grant writing experience. I have a lot of experience navigating bureaucracy, but I've never specifically written a grant.
When you say bureaucracies and stuff, what exactly?
City government, federal government, state government, county governments. I work for a company that is, manages sustainability and energy for other companies. We work a lot with governmental organizations, both on the utility front and on the solar energy and rebates for installing solar or energy efficiency, that kind of thing. I started out in a department that opened and closed accounts on behalf of other companies. So we had to learn to, like, that's, that's what I do. And I've, like I said, I've been there for 19 years. And I now am a really vague title of a process improvement associate. So if you've got a process, I can probably improve it or break it.
Okay, part two to that, and it'll apply across the board. As a council member, what benefit, or what do you expect your purpose? How, how does your experience drive home, how will it help us?
How will, how will what I know be able to help you?
Yes.
Um. I don't know how to, I don't know what to clarify there. Again, it's just navigating the bureaucracy, just knowing how to get through to governmental organizations. What do they need in order for us to meet their criteria is? How to circumnavigate those, how to work our way through those? Just, I just have a lot of bureaucratic experience. Lots of things.
I guess to be fair, Mrs. Meads? Janice?
So say, so, yeah, grant experience I have a lot, but I never did in the beginning. So the last three years with the EDC, I've, that was, the broadband money was coming out. And I started writing grants, not by myself, obviously. And we had a management company that specialized in broadband and worked closely with them, with her, Kara. And every grant that we wrote, we got. The money just kept coming in. So close to, I think, what, 22 to 25 million dollars in broadband funds. And then as the director, when the water infrastructure failed here, I wrote the emergency grant. I know how to, the emergency grants are a little bit more difficult than your normal grant. But, and I'd never done one before, but started making phone calls, writing down information, and navigated that. And it was supposed to actually be a loan, which then they switched over to a grant at the last minute for the city because of the one letter that I submitted about how rate, how high our rates are here. So, I have lots of grant writing experience now. And our infrastructure can use it. I can work, I worked closely with, you know, TD&amp;H, which I know that there was some pushback here and there. But any engineer I could work hand in hand with and write a grant for the city here in town.
In your dealings, in your job with EDC, how, how much did you work with, a lot with local governments? Like state and federal, anything?
All the time. And the state, I worked with them daily. We were through, I, my payroll, I was paid actually through state funds, which I had targets to meet, reports to write, to make sure we got our quarterly payment. And the EDC gets like $150,000 every two years. So it's like 18, 750 every quarter for two-year span. I've worked with every municipality here in Lincoln County in different aspects as a, as the director for the EDC. So I've seen their different issues and their different problems. And, and really, one small town's really not much different than the other on the stuff that they're trying to tackle. So I've been to, I don't, I can't even count how many council meetings I've been to. But I've been to every, every city in town at least, at least six times.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
I'm good with my questions. Since it's the two of them.
Beyond the conversations I was able to have with candidates, fortunately not Chris. Sorry I missed. But I.
So what would you guys like to do next amongst our options?
David mentioned.
Go take an executive session. David, do you have an idea of how long you think we should take?
Ten minutes.
Is that one of your, one of your presets?
That's one of the presets. I wasn't anticipating that. Thirteen minutes.
We're two. One, no. Okay, we're back.
I guess a motion to revote.
Motion.
Is what we need?
Yep.
And second, anybody?
Second. Thank you, we have a motion to revote on the floor. Any discussion before we hold our vote? I'm sorry, that was...
David and Gavin.
David, okay. Thank you for that. All right. Again, from the top. All those voting for Kelly Foreman as our next council member, please signify by raising your hand and verbally acknowledging.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And for Chris, votes for. And for Janice, votes for.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are again at a tie. Well, this does potentially fall on the mayor to break the tie. I was hoping I didn't have to go down this path.
But it says may or may.
May or may, and I may not, but I also made it abundantly clear, right after I filed, and no one filed against me, was that I wanted this resolution passed so that we could have people on the council as soon as possible. So, I got what I wished for. I'm not gonna win. I am not gonna win on this, but on the flip side of that, I'm going to win. From a, from a perspective of having a functioning council, hopefully for the long term. And there's no... I'm stalling, there's no wrong answer. Going to break the tie, and I'm gonna rely on Janice's experience in this role. So, please do not take this personally. Okay. Okay. So, I don't know what happens after this, besides swearing in, is there something else we're supposed to do rather than...
Accepting speech.
Accepting speech.
Now you're giving a speech.
I think it's swearing in.
I believe so. You ready to go to work?
Sure.
It'll be nice to have a woman on the board.
And another.
Another.
That was, I was gonna say.
Well, I wasn't referring to myself.
Okay. I saw that.
Three words at a time. Like, do you want me to get my Bible? Or do I just get, do I get to read it?
We all get to read it out loud.
Make sure you say your name.
I blank, no.
This is the microphone.
I, Janice Meats, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of City Council, position number one, for the City of Harrington for the remainder of the term, ending December 31st, 2025, according to the law, to the best of my ability.
Kelly, did you recognize Timu?
No. I have that exact same shirt.
Doesn't everybody?
I know.
I know, yeah.
I wore it in here last meeting, we were touching, and she was looking at me going, "Timu." And I was like, "What are you talking about?" My shirt, yeah.
Timu.
Are you Bauer Cosway too much? I'm gonna spill something on him.
Second hand? Yeah, that goes to Chandler.
Cousin, cousin Chandler.
Yeah, you gotta sit right there, you have a chair.
All right.
Wow, this is weird. Thank you.
Okay. My agenda. Okay. Water and wastewater system contract. This is on the agenda, I was hoping to have something to present, which I do not tonight, but I have been in discussions with another company to look at taking over our system. They're not going to, and probably their estimate will show us, show us this, but they're not gonna do it unless they can do it correctly, is the bottom line. So, if we are looking for something other than the job to be done completely incorrectly, then we need to look elsewhere, is basically the message I got today. So, I am meeting with them, one or both of them, on Saturday, to do a complete walkthrough of our water and wastewater systems, so that they can better assess what they can do for us. They are a company that is known for, when we have the right personnel in place, to work with them, train them, and potentially work themselves out of a job. So, having done the research on what it takes to get a level-two operator, that is not something that happens in six months, it's a multi-year project, so, just before they can even take the test, so. There's a lot of technology going down the drain, so.
Got it.
So, that's, and if you guys wanna have a discussion with it, I, we really don't have anything to vote on, or even quite honestly to look at tonight, so, if you've got, maybe we can just do it at this, if you guys have questions, just try to get them to me, and then when I meet with them, I can break, I can have that conversation with them. Next on the agenda is the garbage. Unfortunately, we kinda have a little bit of the same story. The, the amendment that was presented was not necessarily palatable, I had a conversation with Sunshine. He himself was not real happy with the amendment, so he agreed to let us rework it together, clean up some of the language, a couple of little things from the past that probably could have been done better in 2018. So, my goal is to have that to him, and hopefully we have that put, as much as have a contract for us to review, ratify, sign off on, but also hopefully have some of the coordination and calibration, or, get that word, basically, the process of how to make the transition, should we choose to, from us to them. And again, we're just talking about the billing system, so, it's a work in progress still. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, concerning the garbage contract, did we need to address this with the citizens ahead of time, and any, because it is gonna fluctuate the rates from what they're used to pay. Some are gonna go down, and some are gonna go drastically up, and then some mediocre. Are we, by law, are we missing anything?
Would we need to hold a public meeting to...
We've had a number, I mean, we've advertised it on Facebook, on our email, we've posted it in our windows that we own.
We have gotten feedback.
And we have gotten feedback, I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it again, if you wanna do it again, but I'm, I'm just saying, we've...
Just trying to cover it for...
We've used a lot of the tools that are disposed of, we're trying to put it out there, I know I've brought it up at Lions Club meetings, I've been trying to tell everyone I can to know this is coming.
And will continue to.
Did we print anything on the utility bills on the backside, like you had mentioned?
No, they, they were out before I took office, so. There will be, and if you want, I can add that to...
I would, I would recommend another shot, because it sounds like we might be a little bit of time here, what is, 10th already, so, it'll buy us some time, by the time we get things pounded out with Sunshine.
Okay. Willis Street. So... Upon our water engineer's recommendation, we got a second bid from them to increase the line from six inches to eight inches. I got that rate, I did not print it off, because it went up significantly higher, around 12 grand.
To go from six to eight?
Yep. So, I talked with the engineer again this morning, will a six work, and he said, in reality, a six will work, he's, it's being fed by six inches on either side, it really wouldn't. Only if we were planning on significant growth in that area, would it make a difference.
Any future tie-ins, like if we get money to replace other existing to tie in, are there any requirements, you know?
No, no. I think the issue would be volume, it would be replacing all those houses with bigger houses with more toilets that are being flushed out at the same time.
Question, though, Mr. Mayor, is that line feeding that fire hydrant?
No.
Okay.
And that was one of the issues that he brought up, is if, you know, if it is feeding multiple fire hydrants, you just gotta go with an eight-inch, but at this point, but it, it is not, so.
Did we know the size of the line feeding the houses?
I didn't ask.
Because if they're one-inch lines, and they're five houses, I don't know if the fluid dynamics work exactly this way, but you've got six inches of feed, and you have five one-inch lines pulling off of it, and in theory, if it works the way it seems to, you have an extra inch to spare.
Yeah, I, I was just going with what the engineer knows from experience. So, this is the, that's the, what I showed you guys a couple weeks ago, for the six-inch line.
Oh, that's the six...
I printed off the six-inch line.
Fifty-seven, yeah.
So, which is still a lot of money, but it's not the $69, $70,000 that an eight-inch line is gonna cost, so. He, I mean, with coordination, we'd have to do some proper pre-con, I, I talked to him a little bit about what would be involved with closing the roads, and when, and how, and coordinating with the fire department and the, and the school districts, they would be looking at about a one-week operation, they would save the actual tying-in to the houses for one day.
One day?
So, the bottom line is, they would do all the work, have everything all set up, the water, the new water main would be sanitized, tested, and then, at the last moment, turn off the water, and they would work with the homeowners there, and coordinate with them so that we can make that done, I mean, this is not their first rodeo, so they would, they're well-suited to know how to get this done.
I'm sorry, the only reason to have an eight-inch line would be if, if there were multiple hydrants pulling off it, and to kind of plan for the future if there's gonna be bigger homes, so six works fine.
Six works fine, yes. I, my understanding is that if you were putting in a new line today, like we were expanding out, and, and he even said, yeah, if he had a, if we had a water line that was going 3,000 feet down in downtown, you'd want it, you would want it six-inch, you'd want it big. That's not the case, we're talking about 320 feet, one block, five connections, no fire hydrants.
And this, being the geographic location, what the water tower is, and down here, you'll have traditionally enough pressure, pressure's not gonna be a problem.
I hope it never will be, yeah.
As opposed to where, living where Stephen is, or...
Well, even when we shut down the water down here, yeah, we had plenty of water pressure down here when we had to shut the water line off for the tower, so.
I've got a pressure tank, just to get pressure.
Yeah, yeah, well, you do, too.
You stand right under, you're right underneath the tank.
Don't get good pressure without the tank, pressure tank.
I, I made a remark to somebody about, I think it was Scotty, and I said something about the water pressure, and he said, "Well, you're right close," and I said, "Yeah, but it just kinda dribbled out."
A lot of factors, you, you might have some of those influences, older lines, there might be a little restricted.
It's been replaced, it's been replaced.
Well, that's at your house.
Maybe it's not the one that goes down the alley, but the one that goes from the alley.
So, fortunately, our water system plan is supposed to be done no later than June 30th, we will have a much, much better idea of what's involved with getting things up, we'll see.
Well, it does make sense to go the full distance on this, instead of just a, what I refer to as a patch, 20-foot, because...
Yeah, we, well, and as you see here, Pat, to patch, what he is thinking is 23 grand, we probably put 20, we probably put that much in the past two years trying to fix this. So, let's stop screwing around, so to speak, let's either let it leak, or let's get it replaced correctly.
Well, going forward to, I think you're aware of it, and probably, well, it's no big secret, is meeting the EPA's water allotment, or whatever it's called, gallons pumped, and if we're just pumping it out in the street, that's gonna throw our numbers off big time as well, too.
We potentially have some explaining to do to the state, why our distribution and what is coming out of the ground are so dramatically different.
You mean, why we're a wetland?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And, and I don't have a problem telling them that we're supporting, you know, salmon habitat, but I don't think that's what they're looking for. So, on, literally, we need to know if you guys want to move forward with this, and we can get it signed and...
I make a motion to accept that, move forward as presented, with the...
The second motion.
Official, the DW, or...
DW excavating.
Escavating.
Just one question and discussion.
Yes.
From the funding sources that were mentioned in the workshop meeting, has any of that changed? Are we still, we're still on track to know roughly where we're gonna find these funds?
Yes, yes. The bulk of it, I think, is, is having the USDA loan deferred for another year. There was something else that came up today, with the, with the water system plan, that we filed an extension, and filed an extension on the payment plan, and that was, I think, zero interest, so it has zero effect on us, so, yeah, from a cash flow point of view, we, we should be well-placed to get that done. I mean, it's, it's money, I mean, like, there's no two ways about it.
Well, the house to be done.
Yeah.
Period, because it's...
It'll extract more from us if we don't.
We, we've given our pound of flesh for it, so to speak, so.
The only question, can we, this is probably a DW question, the bands that we put on there, are they savable, reusable, or not, they're probably not.
In speaking with Jess, with that, because I asked that question, it sounded like, the way they torque them down, literally, they were self-destroying, they bent the bolts, and that's kind of the catch-22, they had to torque them down enough to make them work, but unfortunately, the same amount of torque as well is crushing the old pipe, and probably creating the next leak. But those, yeah, the bolts that put those together, they're, they're one and done.
I know, I, I don't recall what they looked like, I haven't seen one several years ago, but I am familiar with certain types of patches, connectors, that the bolts themselves are pre-torqued, when you tighten them down, they snap off, they need to torque them, so they...
Those kind of fittings were used on our water crossing up here. These are, these are just, I think they're just stainless steel bolts, and they have a, yeah, they have a certain amount of shear, but as you torque them to what they're supposed to, they're literally bending, so. Okay, so, any other questions or comments?
Did you get that, Janice?
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the contract for DW excavating to complete the water main replacement on Willis between...
Sure law, fifth and fourth.
Fourth. Can we have, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May, any may's? Five-oh, thank you. I will keep you up to date on how that works out. So, with that, there is mayor's comments, and I'm going to, really, we've covered everything I have to say, so we don't need to...
Can I bring one, one thing up?
Yes.
In regard to the email that was sent out regarding the DW complaint?
Oh, okay, yes.
It's more of a question, do we have a process for closing sidewalks?
For doing what?
Closing sidewalks. Because I was walking downtown, and there's a sign that said, "Sidewalk closed, use the other side of the street," that's going across the railroad, crossing on a state highway, and while I can recognize that for a lot of Harrington sidewalks don't really matter, because for some, they don't exist most of the time, that's kind of a really special sidewalk, that I get that they might need to close it, but would, did we have a say-so in it, and do we have a policy to make sure that we, I mean, we should probably kind of know about any sidewalk closing, but especially that sidewalk closing is a really special sidewalk, because there isn't any that's...
Well, to add to that, being that it was a higher priority with the railroad there, they probably should have had crossing guards, physical people there to facilitate traffic.
So, that particular sidewalk being adjacent to the state highway, it may be subject to the same rules that we do when we close down the street here for a parade or what have you. I will have to check, I do not know, I don't know if Harrington has a sidewalk closure process.
I don't, I'm not, I get all up in people's business, it's probably not necessary for the most part, but that, that one's just special.
No, true.
Were they overhanging it, or just driving on it, what was the situation?
No, there was...
I'm sorry. It's just adjourn your meeting, because I don't know what was going on.
So, it was just somebody driving on there, or what was the reason?
No, they, they put a, they put like a sandwich sign, like, so I was coming down from my house, right, and before you would get to the tracks area, it said, "Sidewalk closed, use the other side of the street."
Well, to me, I...
There isn't a sidewalk.
I'm pretty sure...
Correct.
That they were, like, they should have been crossing guards, or somebody, personnel there to facilitate that.
So, I know that that's been escalated, as you guys saw, that went to Margie Hall, she sent it up the pipe with the contractor, and it's going to be a, they're going to be having a meeting on the 23rd, and it's gonna address that.
No, and I'm gonna trust that they're gonna do whatever diagnostics to that issue, this is more about us and what, what we do for contractors and stuff going forward.
I would have thought that they would have come to the city hall and said, "We're gonna be working right here, we need to close down the sidewalk for the period of time on this date."
Communicate.
Yeah, just communication, just to...
So. And we may have to explore, go into more depth, I'm gonna guess that the franchise agreement that we offered probably gave up some of our control on that.
Shouldn't have, not with stuff like that, no.
So, but I will look, and we will explore if we need to have something on our books for the future.
We're probably not gonna often have, we're not gonna find ourselves in that position very often, so.
Public comments.
I was just gonna say, if you take notice, I think you're probably one of the only ones or few that uses sidewalks in this town, right?
It must be self-serving, just bringing it up, I'm like, well, it's me and Peter, but you know.
With the exception of going into the businesses down here, they don't use them.
But, you know, I was, I was walking downtown with Becky and George, and it's like, I'm thinking to myself, what am I gonna actually, like, I, I just said, just ignore it, walk, walk on the sidewalk, because I'm not gonna take her, because there's no shoulder on the other side, right, and so, I guess if it's more able-bodied, I'm not having a stroller with me, I'll just walk over the tracks and get off the road, but I can't do that with the stroller, so it's like, it was, my mind was very aware of the fact, it's like, I don't have any other options but to ignore this, right?
Well, if somebody, a handicap scooter, something like that, so, yeah, they, they probably should have communicated with the city, and, and/or had flaggers, to say, when I say man them, that watching it, if you need to go up that sidewalk, they've stopped their work in progress, let them pass safely, and then go, so, it's usually...
Peter's always walking around town, and I wouldn't have liked to have seen him have to navigate that decision either, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor.
It's quite all right. Public comments, anybody have anything that they want to add this evening?
I have a small group announcement.
Yes, Joe?
So, on Saturdays, I think it's the 13th, we have a county caucus for District One, and that's gonna be the best of the school, starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, and District One has one, two seats, so hopefully, and what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna have two delegates for the next caucus that's gonna be in Allen Ford, so, District One is gonna be two at the school, from 10 to 11 o'clock, if anything, you can take that.
Cool, 10 o'clock.
Two minutes before noon.
Right, I was just...
Only, the only...
The only, yes.
You know, I, so what do you decide, I mean, what's gonna go on, for sure?
So, we're gonna have a county caucus after each of our districts, there's gonna be three full conferences on Saturday, and if those conferences, we're gonna elect delegates, and those delegates are gonna be in Allen Ford in March, January 20th, and then from there, we're gonna delegate to a conference, which is in April, and that'll be in the whole game.
No, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Joe, I just, some things I don't fully understand the whole process, so I'm just trying to get...
I'm learning it well, so I should run this thing, and I've never done one before, so, I can read the rules, and...
You sure did, thank you.
Okay, we're at a point where I'm a little lost, because Levi is not here.
Nobody else comments, right?
No, no, okay. Stephen steps up.
Second.
Motion to adjourn at 8:57, all in favor?
Aye.